For December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We'll call it Mr. Veder.
Layla.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Delka.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions for the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the high of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received as proposed or as amended?
So moved.
Okay.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The opposed motion carried. Other comments? Anybody in the audience got any comments? Anybody online? Hearing none. Moving on to claims and payments.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Morning.
Our significant payments today. We are paying NAF Care for medical services at the jail in the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. We also are making a payment to Summit Food Service for food service at the jail for twelve thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty cents. We're paying quite a large chunk to Mid-American Energy today, twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-one cents. Fresh Start Cleaning Solutions for janitorial services, twenty thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Next one we have, we're making another installment to Iowa Municipalities Work Comp Association on our Workers' Comp Policy, thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. And we're paying the City of Waterloo for our zoning and building administration, ten thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. And I think those are all the larger payments we're making today. The total is three hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. And we're paying out of the Sheriff's Sixty-Forty Fund, two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighteen cents. Everything appears to be in order.
We'll see if it works now. Thanks.
Motion to approve?
Of the second?
Second.
Couple people got their mics turned on. Wish, uh, online, please shut them off. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layla?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is to receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. A brief report on the gravel road system. The gravel roads are in poor condition in a lot of places. We had been starting to develop a crust of frozen ground on the gravel road system, but due to some of the warmer temperatures and the rain we've been having this past week, that has caused the top surface to unthaw. The rain is now sitting on that frozen surface, and it's a mess. There's potholes in a lot of places. There's not a lot we can do about it by, we've had requests to haul gravel on the gravel roads, but that our large trucks are currently equipped with the sander and the salt spreader, so we cannot put rock into those trucks and place the rock on the roads, and it would damage the roads most likely anyway. So there's not a lot we can do about it right now. Please bear with us till they freeze, refreeze totally on the surface again. Uh, the plows, we don't anticipate the plows being out on the paved road system today. Probably later in the week, we're anticipating some snow. Uh, Thursday and Friday, the temperatures look like they're going to drop with some precipitation, and then the wind should pick up by Saturday, it looks like. So the roads may be slick on Saturday, but we'll be out with our plows as needed. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other department head? Oh, morning, Orlando.
Good morning, Board. Orlando Lovelace, Director of Black Hawk County Veterans Affairs. I just got a quick presentation that I'd like to share with everyone. Let's see if I can share the screen. So again, November was a very busy month for us, um, for our, our office itself. I'd like to first start off and thank our staff for all the things that they have done in support of our veterans throughout the county. I, I tell you, it's a, it's a great time to be a veteran in Black Hawk County because of all the great things that we have done. I do also want to say thank you to the board supervisors for supporting us through the month of November for Operation Green Light. I thought that was also a success. And I'll show you a couple slides going forth. Uh, in particular, Rory, thank you. The courthouse looked wonderful. Um, I don't know who, who stabbed Rory and made him do it, but it, I tell you what, it made, it made us look real good. Just a couple of things that are going on in December, I just kind of like to highlight. You already have these slides, so I'll slide right through them in that standpoint, just sharing them again. Uh, but I want to get down to the meet and greet, the why we're here, um, in that standpoint. Again, so veterans helping veterans, um, and to include Mr. Craig White. There was a group of Marines that wanted to donate a bunch of turkeys and hams to veterans, um, and we gave them some names and they went out and did that. It's, uh, the community is, is actually playing Santa Claus early for our veteran community, and how thankful I am for that. This is just again, some, just some pictures of veterans helping veterans where people are donating to our, our office to ensure that we give back to our veterans. It's almost like a return on investment. And also here's some more slides, in particular that went on the lower right-hand side. These are youth, uh, from post forty-nine that went out and raised money for our nursing home baskets that we're going to be doing. They raised about three thousand dollars to help us fill up one hundred and eighty-nine nursing home baskets that we're going to take out to the nursing homes during the week of the nineteenth. Again, just want to share the community cheer, I mean, community cheer that is going on in the spirit of helping others. Also, we participated in U and I Military Ball, um, and some of our commissioners got awards, and then some various people that are doing great things for our veterans were awarded in that standpoint. With Operation Green Light, uh, again, I just kind of want to share a couple of things. These are some pictures from, you can see the courthouse lit up in green. I wish we would've got there a little darker. Uh, even Supervisor Schwartz's home down at the bottom. Thank you, Chris, for supporting us in that standpoint. And, uh, even in front of our building, Rory and his group helped us put a green light in front of our office. And then a couple of other pictures from various military veterans who supported us. The one on the lower left, that's my home, and I just wanted to show you that I had three, four green lights out there, um, just supporting that program. So I guess I matched the county courthouse in that standpoint. Couple of things that we, uh, you could see how busy we were in the month of November, um, in particular on Veterans Day. But also like to highlight the, the partnership we've established with our commission. Our commission is out there now participating in a lot of functions. And I just put their names associated with where they are because it's showing their community that not just our office is doing things, but our five commissioners are out there staying busy also, and we're thankful for that. Uh, we just had our, our commission meeting last Wednesday, and Michelle, you ought to be happy, they agreed with my proposal for our FY twenty-four budget. Um, and so we'll be populating that here real soon and getting that and out there. The other thing is, we're still trying to recognize more and more female veterans that are doing great things out in the, out in the community. Um, I recognize this particular person because, uh, we just celebrated our thirty-fifth wedding anniversary, and we celebrated it separated again. Uh, she was in Chicago, I was here, uh, working. And that's just part of the military style. I think we maybe only spent out of thirty-five years that we've been together. Maybe seventeen of those years, we've had the opportunity to actually celebrate it together, but that's just all it's about. But I just want in particular, just point out that in Chiquita's case, U and I has been designated the number one small college for military friendly for the second year in a row. Um, and as some of that is just based off her attributes of what she's doing and her leadership here at U and I. And again, recognizing veterans throughout the community that are doing great things, not just in the service, but also outside of service in their current, uh, public role. Some of the things that I also wanted to show you was cash donations. Again, the Christmas spirit coming in. You can see October comparative to November, almost forty-four hundred dollars in November just for Operation Christmas, um, and a total six thousand dollars that we took in in November. And already in December, we've already had a veteran give us fifteen hundred dollars in donations. The Sheriff Department is going to surprise us soon. You can see the sheriff with his beard, and we thank for those partnerships. The Audit, Audit Art, Auditor's Office under Grant's leadership, they've donated. Um, and so we do appreciate the partnerships that even within the departments of the county are helping our veterans in that standpoint. So we appreciate that, Sheriff. Uh, some of the other things that I kind of wanted to articulate to our commission was we get a ten thousand dollar grant. It's not guaranteed every year, but we get it from the state of Iowa. Um, and I just wanted to show them and highlight how we are using that grant in a particular. And most of it is for, um, advertisement, promoting our office in that standpoint. Uh, you can utilize it for outreach programs, for advertisement, and for training. And I just kind of highlight what we've done since the start of the, this new fiscal year. And then, uh, where are we at with our budget? Um, and this was, um, a critical source for how we looked at our budget for twenty-four. Uh, but in five months, this is our percentages that we're using, that we have spent, uh, helping our veterans in that standpoint. Just, uh, some quick numbers for you. Then lastly, um, where we're at, again, I, every month I, I look at that as a rule of thumb, is where we're at comparative to, uh, some of the other bigger counties in that standpoint. Are we hitting the match, I mean, the mark? And advertisement is the key to promote more people to come out. We did get an influx during, uh, the first two months of, um, with the new proposal with the PACT Act. We're starting to see that, that foot traffic delve down. I don't know if it's a little bit associated with the weather, or we hit the pendulum, and now we're starting to come back down. Uh, but we're, we're still making some good progress. About a hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty veterans a month coming into our office, uh, seeking, um, services. And then that's it. Just standing by for questions and answers. Forty-two widow gift cards is what we're going to be sending out at twenty-five dollar increments. We have forty-two widows that are on our list that we've helped throughout the year due to the loss of a husband or spouse in that standpoint. We had, uh, we have twenty sponsors that are going to help us through Operation Christmas. That's going to support forty-two veterans, um, in that standpoint. For Thanksgiving, we supported thirteen veterans, uh, with, um, gift cards so that they can go out and get their lunches. Already talked about a hundred and eighty-nine, um, nursing home bags. And again, the donations that we're getting, we're reinvesting that back into the community, trying to give people, um, our veterans, uh, what they need. We still have a lot of winter gear available, coats, gloves, and hats. So again, if there's a veteran out there, don't let them suffer in this weather. We have the gear that can outfit them. And again, I just want to thank the staff. I want to thank the board supervisors and the community for all the great things that you guys continue to do in supporting our office in our efforts to make sure that Black Hawk County stands out within a state of supporting veterans.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other department head or elected official? Morning.
Good morning, Board. Caitlin Ummerich, Interim Director for the Health Department. I just have a quick update this morning. First, we have started some upgrades in our conference room space due, um, through the COVID-nineteen technology funds that we've received, those grant funds. We've started those updates, and so those are underway. And second of all, I want to take a minute to introduce our new Financial and Accounting Manager, Matthew Verbraken. And Matthew, come up here if you'd like. Um, Matthew has his MBA in accounting and started with us at the end of November, so if there's anything you'd like to say. Go ahead.
Oh. I, I, I appreciate the opportunity. Uh, it's been great working with so far Caitlin and Michelle, and I hope to do everybody a great job.
Welcome on board.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for me this morning?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move on to, we got an hearing scheduled for nine oh five. Ordinance number seventy-seven dash two seventy-three, reasoned on request by Dr. Brad Boswell.
And I think we missed the minutes. I think number five, we skipped number five.
The CFO or something?
The minutes, the minutes approved.
Oh, minutes approved. Yeah, minutes approved for, uh, December sixth. Was that a so moved?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Moving on to consent agenda by resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions on any of the items? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz? Delka?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Contracts and agreements. This is a resolution at the lowest reasonable bid received from Taylor Construction Incorporated in New Vina, Iowa for the completion of the identified work with the structures along Division One of the Cedar Valley Nature Trail Project, unpaid portion of the trail, which consists of replacement of the existing bridge over Mud Creek, repairs of the existing box culvert, and replacement of existing concrete.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. And Mike?
Morning, Board. Mike Kendrickson, Director of County Conservation. Um, just a very quick refresher for everyone. Um, you've heard a lot of Division Ones, Division Twos. This is, again, this is the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. This is Division One of the Cedar Valley Nature Trail Project. Um, this has been approved, move ahead. This is the division that we're using the Destination Iowa funds for, that we got the grant for, so we're moving forward with this. Um, this is paving of approximately nine and a half miles of the Cedar Valley Nature Trail, uh, replacement of one bridge, as you, uh, as you read, and, uh, replacement of a culvert and repair of a culvert. Now, take Division One, divide it into two phases, because this is Phase One. All right, uh, the engineer felt like it would be best, it would be the most economical for, uh, everyone if we divided it into structures first and then the paving. So this contract is only for the structures, building replacement of the bridge and the culverts. Um, that being said, uh, we sent the bid tab. Um, the bids for the construction of the structures ranged from seven hundred and fifteen thousand, just slightly over that, to eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. There were three bids for that. Um, Black Hawk County Conservation Board has approved the, the low bid with Taylor Construction. Um, we're basically bringing this to you and asking to approve the same. Um, some of the big, uh, differences in the bids themselves, there's over a hundred thousand dollars in difference. Um, some of the big items on the low bid, um, just simply item number one, clearing and grubbing. Uh, low bid came in at twenty-four hundred dollars. Uh, they ranged all the way to tw- over twenty thousand dollars just for clearing and grubbing. Items two, three, and four, excavation. Um, low bidder came in at, if you add those three items together, right around eight thousand dollars. Um, and then you can go to the high end of the bids, um, those three items came in at over thirty-one thousand dollars. And then if you want to go down and look at the, the other big one, mobilization, item number thirty. Um, the low bid came in at seventy-three thousand dollars for mobilization, and we went all the way to the high end of a hundred and eighty-two thousand for mobilization. So that's where all the differences were. Um, Origin Design has worked with Taylor Construction before. They feel very comfortable working with them, uh, and therefore, um, that's, we, we feel like, uh, we're in good hands there. Are there any questions?
Anyone online got questions? Any of the supervisors? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a resolution to accept and approve Contract Amendment Number Four for the Professional Service Contract with the Origin Design of Dubuque, Iowa for the Cedar Valley Nature Trail Division One Structures Project for Black Hawk County and utilizing American Rescue Plant Funds for construction services to include construction administration, construction staking, and construction observation for this phase of the project.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Mike?
Okay, and then very briefly, um, these are basically, this is construction services with Origin. Uh, for lack of better terms, they are watchdogs on the project. They will watch the contractor, make sure everything's up to specs, make sure, you know, things are all done right, um, compaction testing, all those kinds of things. So this is very common, um, and this is, again, this is just for Phase One of Division One, so.
Any questions for Mike? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called. Thank you, Mike.
Delka? Delka? Layla?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a resolution at the appointments of Rebecca Buckholz and Garth Goodrich to Deputy Recorders effective January second, two thousand and twenty-three, will be approved. Director Chair design for same is recommended by Sandy Smith, Black Hawk County Recorder.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Sandy, got anything you want to add?
Quickly, I'll just say Black Hawk County is lucky to have these two. They each started their careers many years ago, um, Garth at the youth shelter, Becky at Country View. So they were able to bid and transfer into my department, and we're very lucky to.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So a motion and a second on the floor. Hearing no further discussion. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layla?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a resolution at the statement of completion and final acceptance of work for project bridge replacement on Gresham Road be approved and Director Chair design for same is authorized and Director Chair Auditor to make final payment in the amount of thirty thousand dollars with a total project cost of one million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and six cents, as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Yeah, good morning again. Uh, as is customary during this, when we're asking for acceptance of this project, I'd like to show you some slides of before and after, so you know what, what the project has been about. Uh, so this East Gresham Road Bridge, these are some slides of the, the old bridge. It was built in nineteen forty-eight. It's a hundred and eighty feet long. You can see that it was five piers at the time, uh, timber piles that were significantly deteriorating with some steel beams. Uh, as I said, it was, it is a gravel road, and there are thirty vehicles per day on, per DOT counts, current DOT counts, and we anticipate in thirty years, the DOT counts will still be thirty vehicles per day. Um, just a few slides of the deteriorating timber pile. You can see that they're splitting, they're widening, they're deteriorating again at that water line, where, which is where we most likely see these, this deterioration happening. Uh, this pile here is very deteriorated. On Pier Two, the last inspection was in August of two thousand and twenty. Uh, Ryan Brennan was out there and, and saw these deteriorating conditions and decided that it was probably time to close this bridge permanently. Um, that is what we did. After consulting with our, uh, bridge consultants, structural engineers, uh, we closed it on August third of two thousand and twenty. Uh, we had already had it in our five-year plan because we had been doing inspections. Obviously, we knew it was going to be, it was a needed bridge, and we knew it was going to be, needing to be replaced. We hired I I W, or Origin Design, as it are now called, to do the design of the structure itself. We did the grading plans and the, the site prep plans and the quantities, that type of thing. The new bridge is two hundred and nine feet, so it's a longer structure, and it's a three-pier with two abutments, of course, on each end. Uh, we used swap funding, which used to be the old funnel funding. Uh, it was led by the DOT in February of two thousand and twenty-one. It was awarded to PCI for one point one two four million dollars with fifteen hundred dollars a day liquidated damages. Uh, these are just a few slides of the demolition of the structure that started, uh, April first on, in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, some more slides of the, uh, work on the piers. So this would be the cofferdam that was installed so that they can, uh, put the pile in. You can see the, uh, orange markings here where the piles will go. Uh, the middle slide shows the pile driving, the crane with the pile drive, driving apparatus on it. And then this would be a cofferdam with the piles already installed there. Uh, moving on to the, uh, the construction of the piers, they are all done. The contractor, PCI, has completed work on these abutments. Uh, in the right slide, they have gotten the formwork done so that they can pour the, the deck for the concrete, uh, deck here. Uh, moving on, you can see all the green steel, uh, waiting for the concrete to be poured on the deck. And then in the right photo, you can see that the, uh, the concrete is being poured there. Um, and then just in completion here, in conclusion, it was completed with just one and a half days over, overtime. So we did assess them fifteen hundred dollars of liquidated damages. We do anticipate the structure will last seventy-five years. It's concrete and steel. There is no salt being used on this bridge because it is a gravel road. So we do expect a long life with this bridge, and I would recommend that you accept it and we be allowed to pay PCI the, the retainers that we've held throughout the, uh, since we started construction.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Layla?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a resolution at the statement of completion and final acceptance of work for project resurfacing on Canfield Road and direct the Chair to sign for same and authorize and direct the Iowa Department of Transportation to make final payment in the amount of thirty thousand dollars with a local project cost of two million, five hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seven cents, as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Yeah, moving on.
Second.
Moving on to this project, uh, this was a resurfacing project. Just show you a few pictures of the before conditions of Canfield Road and then Eagle Road. So the portion of Canfield Road that was resurfaced was from Dubuque Road north up to Independence Road. It was last resurfaced in nineteen ninety-nine. At that time, the concrete was rubbleized, it was broken up, and then there were several inches of hot mix placed over it. Since that time, you can see there have, has, had been severe, um, centerline cracking where that centerline was opening up and allowing water to get down into the pavement. You can see there were transverse cracking, um, the same thing when water gets down into those pavement cracks, it expands and can cause, um, tenting or the pavement to, uh, rise up. Of course, we do, uh, seal our cracks, but we don't do that every year just for budgetary, uh, reasons. So we try to stay on top of the seal cracking, but we cannot prevent or water from getting into all the cracks on the roadway. Uh, the existing road was eleven feet wide with about a three-foot shoulder. Um, the Eagle Road project was the portion from Disent Road over eastward to Highway two eighteen. That was last resurfaced in two thousand, so it was about twenty-two years old. At that time, three and a half inches of asphalt were placed on it. Very similar, uh, types of distress were being seen on this road, longitudinal cracking, transverse cracking, that we had done, uh, our job seal coating, I'm sorry, crack sealing. But of course, over time, the surface is deteriorating, and it needs to be resurfaced. This road was also eleven feet wide. We wanted to widen both roads in particular. Uh, they both had two different types of treatment on them just due to what the existing roadway, uh, structure was. Canfield Road was a treatment with a one-inch overlay of a interlayer and then three inches of hot mix asphalt. And we base widened that two feet wide so that we would have a thirteen-foot lane when we were finished. And then Eagle Road was a Cold and Place recycled project where we cold and place recycled four inches of the roadway and then placed four inches of new hot mix on top of that. The DOT does allow us to tie these two projects together to get better bids, so that's what we did. It was led by the Iowa DOT in November of two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, the contract did provide fifty-five working days and fifteen hundred dollars a day, uh, liquidated damages. And the contract was two point seven million dollars. Uh, just a few photos of the construction on the Canfield Road project. Uh, one of the things we tried on that project, um, that we, we haven't typically done much of is to, we, we're going to have inset pavement markings on this roadway, so the contractor ground in just about a quarter of an inch or a little bit less than that. And then as the paint was applied onto the new asphalt in that recessed portion and, and that will give us longer-lasting pavement markings. This is just a, a photo of the grumble strips that were ground into the new pavement. So that's what the new road looks like today. Turned out very nice, very smooth. Uh, this is over on the Eagle Road project now. This is the Cold and Place Recycling where the contractor. This is the Colden Place recycling where the contractor basically mills up four inches of existing roadway and puts it right back down again, rolls it out, and the roadway has to cure for about two weeks, and then Aspro came back and placed three inches of new asphalt on top of that. That turned out, turned out really well. We did receive a smoothness award from the Asphalt Pavement Association of Iowa on this project in particular. In conclusion, they did finish on time. Aspro finished in 37 days. New liquidated damages had to be assessed, and the contract was about 7% under. Our costs were about 7% under the contract costs. We do anticipate this roadway lasting 20 to 25 years. I would recommend that you accept the project, and then we be allowed to release the retainage to Aspro that we've collected over the life of the contract. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions? Hearing none, this is the resolution, please answer your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is discussion, possible board action, discuss the fiscal year 22 contract awarded to Withem Auto Center for purchase of two half-ton pickup trucks.
I did send you an email on this. We, this was budgeted in our FY '22 budget for $80,000 on September 14th of 2021. About 15 months ago, we did sign a purchase order with Withem. They were the low bid. We received several bids. They were our low bid. They did tell us they didn't know how long these pickup trucks were going to take for us to receive. Since that time, we've just been waiting. We've been checking with them periodically as to when these trucks were going to show up, so we are now into the new fiscal year. We did hear last week that these new pickup trucks were going to be available. They would be delivered to us this week. However, the price had increased, and they increased $6,638 each. We are getting a new, this would be a new model year, this would be an FY, excuse me, a model year '23 rather than a model year '22, which is what the original purchase order had indicated. We would like to be allowed to take delivery of these pickup trucks. We would be disposing of pickup truck number 82, which has 343,000 miles on it, and pickup truck number 86, which has 316,000 miles on it. They are both half-ton pickup trucks. This is just part of our normal fleet replacement, and we would very much like to take delivery of these pickup trucks. We do have money in our FY '23 budget. We are now talking about a different budget year, but we do have money in that budget to pay for these pickup trucks. Can I answer any questions?
How many pickup trucks you got in the engineers department?
We have approximately 26 to 28 pickup trucks.
But I find it hard to believe that we've got trucks with 300,000, 400,000 miles when for the last 15, 16, 18 years, we've been buying pickup trucks every year.
Are we using a different vehicle too in the meantime, or what's being used currently, I guess? Are these still?
So, yes, we are, the two that I mentioned, number 82 and number 86, both Ford pickup trucks, we're still using those. We're, yes, we are using those trucks as we speak.
But both have over 300,000 miles.
Right.
What year are those, do you know, Kathy?
Probably 1980.
I don't know, I'm sorry. Would you know that, Allison?
Truck number, did you say 82, Kathy?
Yes, 82 and 86.
Truck number 82 is a 2003, and truck number 86 is also a 2003.
And these two, as you said, are just, we're replacing, kind of in that vehicle replacement, this is just the time for those two to be replaced.
Correct.
Just that we've gotten 15-month delay on receipt.
Right, unfortunately, they were delayed 15 months.
And they have them now, so they'd be.
Yes, one, one has been delivered out to the shop, and one was supposed to be delivered possibly today or tomorrow. We did say not to drive the trucks or.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
I'll have a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved to second, any further discussion? Hearing none. This is the resolution, please answer your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
No.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a motion that the personnel requisition for office specialists full-time to the treasurer's office be approved as recommended by Rita Pettreger.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, the motion to approve the updated ICAP member proxy from listing from Debbie Bunker and Michelle Whedner as member liaisons and direct the chair to sign for same.
So moved.
Okay.
Moved to second, any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, the motion director county auditor to advertise republic hearing bid opening upheld 9:05 on January 10th, 2023, Boardroom 201, Blackhawk County Courthouse on the proposed fiscal year 2023 guardrail repair in various locations throughout Blackhawk County.
So moved.
Moved to second.
Are there any questions on this? I just, this is three locations throughout Blackhawk County for guardrail repair.
Thank you. Any question, other questions for Kathy? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to direct county auditor to advertise republic hearing bid opening on, held at 9:07, Boardroom 201, Blackhawk County Courthouse, 316 East 5th on Iowa, proposed fiscal year 2023, bridge deck repair in various locations throughout Blackhawk County.
So moved.
Second.
Moved to second, any questions for Kathy?
I want to mention that one of these bridges is on Elkhorn Road, and we do share this bridge with the city of Elkhorn Heights on a 50/50 percentage basis.
You did mention that in an email, but thanks.
Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is discussion, contract with NAF Care.
Good morning, board.
Morning.
A little over two months ago, I notified the board that our current contractor for jail medical and mental health services indicated that they wanted to renegotiate their current contract due to rising costs and impending losses at the jail facility. And that was early September. The board discussed it and didn't give any guidance. Now, a couple of weeks ago, we received a second letter from them indicating that if they're not given guidance by February, that they would indicate a 90-day notice to quit and go ahead and sever their contract with us. So I laid out for the board earlier this week, or late last week, kind of a timeline for your options of either contracting, moving forward with NAF Care, or if you wanted to pursue going out to RFP, what that timeline looked like. Either way, we're running out of time to be able to make either one of those work. So we're looking for some guidance as to what the board's pleasure is moving forward with regard to that medical and mental health contract at the jail.
Tony, when does a contract mean a contract? I mean, we signed a contract in good faith. This guy or this company is having problems, that's their problem, not ours. And you think you're going to block away from a $1.2, $1.4 million contracts, like there's a lot of them out there?
I don't think there's a lot of them out there. I think, I think you're going to see that if we put this out to RFP, you're probably going to get two or three. In fact, we were contacted by Harden County. One of the other notable jail medical services in the, in the state just went bankrupt. They are currently contracted with Harden County, we know for sure, and I would guess probably 15, 20 others in the state. One of the larger ones in the state of Iowa.
What's the increase, Tony, that he wants?
It was about 28%, 28%.
That's, he hires some new staff, which is our problem, I guess, when he has the company and we don't.
And then you were going to work with them on seeing about negotiating something different, and that's kind of where we ended up, then the 28 is the 28% increase was this?
What we ended up with, yeah, it was larger than that. Where we ended up, yeah, where we ended up was about that 28%.
What's your recommendation?
My recommendation is not to go to RFP, because you go to RFP and you're going to pay more than the 28%. I don't like it, but given the lesser of two evils, that's my recommendation.
And when's the last time we did an RFP?
2010. But again, there are times to do an RFP, this is not those times.
And Tony, when is the existing contract up? Because maybe that would be a time to explore doing an RFP.
We extended it, I think it goes through 2025. Yeah, June of '25.
Okay.
So his current request is only for the remainder of this contract?
Correct.
And then we have no idea what he's going to come back with then the next time?
Well, again, we would renegotiate the contract at that point. We would, we would be back in the catbird seat to be able to do whatever we wanted to do.
You know, and I commend you, you've been working on this quite a bit, your staff. I don't like dealing with people like this. This is, I don't know how many contracts I've had vote on in the last few weeks. Today was one, we had an agreement, but now they wanted something different. Couple of months ago, we had another agreement with somebody and they wanted more money. I mean, why are we even signing these if they don't mean nothing?
I think, I think this was signed before, Tom. I think it was signed before COVID, it was signed before everybody had the run on visiting nurses. I think we've got two or three visiting nurses now. We're not paying $200 an hour like some of the hospitals are or were, but we're still paying those exorbitant costs, the costs. Everybody's, you know, medical is just astronomical right now, but I don't want to make excuses for them. I don't work in the medical field, I don't know the medical field. I certainly know what I know about, you know, correctional healthcare. I know way more than I care to know, but at this point in time, my best recommendation to this board is knowing that field, knowing the conversations that we've had professionally with others in that field, and knowing what I know, serving on, on the Foundation Board for Mercy, talking with and having shared with you all, conversations with Pam Delagardel and Gary, Jack Duzenberry, and, and, you know, just, we know what the medical field looks like right now, and we're feeling that. I don't know that it's disingenuous, I think they truly are trying to be a good partner. That's why I flew him up here to, to converse with you face to face. I don't think they're trying to bilk us, I think he truly is losing those dollars. We're the largest, or I'm sorry, we are the longest contract in their portfolio, but we are also the smallest in their portfolio. So this is not really the kind of contract that they're going to lose a lot of sleep over because they just don't make money on these small contracts like that. So if he were to end this contract, they would move on. They would feel sad because we were the longest lasting contract with them, but this is just the nature of jail and correctional healthcare. So I'm trying to make recommendations to you based on our breadth of experience and what we know that, that market to look like, and we know if we go to RFP, that 28% is going to pale by comparison, plus the amount of work, time, energy, and effort, and consulting costs and everything else that's going to go along with it, the county's going to end up paying more than what they're asking for. And they'll probably bid, but they'll bid higher than that 28%.
What's the current contract right now? How much?
1.2? 1.3 right now, it sounds like.
And that'll raise it to what?
About 1.4, 1.45.
But you know, it's ironic, and again, I'm not criticizing you, but he's taking losses, these companies are taking losses, the car dealership. What about the county? Do we have open pocketbooks?
Right.
My God, the taxpayers out there are taking losses too every day, and they got to fork up for increased taxes to pay for this stuff.
Yeah, I don't disparage that comment either, I'm right there with you.
Yeah, and long before COVID, years before COVID, the health department's telling us there was a shortage of nurses. And I'll tell you what, this, they're going to be using COVID as excuse for the next 10 years, you mark my words.
That may be true too.
Go ahead.
No, that may be true too, Tom. I don't disparage that comment or that observation either.
Yeah, it just disappoints me because we make agreements of good faith, not only here, but in the engineers department. Every time I turn around, we're asked to amend it, and it costs us more money, like we got endless money. County's got so much money, apparently we don't have problems.
He noted in his, in his letter to you all that the only other contract that they have in the state of Iowa was with Polk County, and their, their cost per inmate per day is 2162, and we're paying 1514. So comparatively, we are an inexpensive contract when you, when you factor that down to inmate per day costs for health services. So I guess one could look at that argument and just say that, that we've been pretty frugal with this contract over the years, and maybe that's slowly coming back to bite us. You know, when, when the county drives a vehicle for 300,000 miles, that's pretty frugal as well, so maybe we look at it from that perspective as well.
So you're.
I personally, I personally would, regardless, unless it was a complete emergency, using my personal money, I wouldn't spend 20, 30, 40% above and beyond. And it looks like we're asked to, as a board, every day to do this, and it just makes the waterfalls our own money if we'd be in favor of it.
Hey, Tom, this is Nate, just want to add one thing real quick on concern if we do go out to RFP too. Like Tony mentioned, Harden County's company went bankrupt. I go to a couple of different schools a year where all the different vendors are there, whether it be food, commissary, whatever vendors, medical ones are there. I'm actually heading to one this afternoon. For the, most of the state of Iowa and even the Midwest, there's been two main companies, one called MEND and one called ACH, which I think is Associated Correction, Advanced Correctional Healthcare. As I understand it, MEND has always been the cheaper one of those two. NAF Care doesn't even come, because like Tony said, they're, were a small contract for them, so certainly most of the other counties in the state aren't even worth their attention. So when we were, if we're talking going to RFP, I would have assumed MEND, ACH, and NAF Care would have bid for us. When Harden County Jail Administrator called me last week in a panic because MEND went bankrupt, part of that was they lost a lawsuit, not in Harden County, but in one of the other facilities. So that's kind of two of our key points. You go with the cheapest person, that risk for liability, that risk for lawsuits kind of opens itself up, and then on top of that, they don't have the capability to absorb that loss either, especially in today's climate. So where I would have been assuming we'd get NAF Care, ACH, and MEND to bid for us, MEND is obviously off the table, so now we're probably going to be lucky to get two companies, one of whom we already have if we do RFP.
So, so what's the solution, mate?
There's, I'll be frank, I mean, there's not a good solution. You go with what you know, and like I said, they, and Brad was up here a couple of months ago, he talked to us and said, yeah, if we have to bid this, it's not going to be that 28%. Right now, we're, we're offering this to try and keep a contract. If it goes to RFP where we know we're bidding against someone else, we're going to bid it like we would bid a brand-new contract. So, I mean, I'm a taxpayer here too, Tom, I live in the county, I don't want to just throw money at problems by any means myself. I do believe it'll probably cost us more if we go to RFP with it, but again, that's why.
I was, I was there the last time we RFP, and it was a big job. It was a huge, massive job, but I guess my last. But I guess my last questions for you are maybe for Sheriff, how do we pay for it?
That's the tough question right there.
Yeah, you leave it to the five people sitting up there.
So, yeah, unfortunately, we, we manage your jail, we run the day to day, we try and keep you out of hot water, we try and keep you out of federal court. We've done a pretty damn good job of that over the last 14 years. But when it comes to funding it, that, that building's your obligation, so we bring it to you and.
When's the time come, Tony, that we can't afford it, or will that time never come?
Well, I think at, at some point, you've, you've got to, you've got to evaluate risk versus reward. You know, at what point does one lawsuit at, at a million dollars and, and those are not unreasonable? Or, or out of the, just, just Google, you know, jail healthcare lawsuits. Those happen all the time, because again, you're talking about people with idle hands. They sue all the time, and we have, again, I knock on wood when I say this, we have just not had many of those. And it's because we, we do a good job of hiring good people, training them well, holding high standards, having good policies and procedures, and then making sure that the staff that we surround ourselves with perform their duties in a way that we expect. If you'll remember back prior to me taking office, you had a consent decree with the federal government. And that was not comfortable either. The country, the county paid millions of dollars to get us out of that federal consent decree. And that was on a brand new facility. So we are, we are light years from where we were. And that's not to disparage the prior administration, it's just fact of where we were versus where we are today. So it really is a crappy sandwich. I mean, I, I get those every day. If they were simple, they'd be solved well before they come to us. But this is one of those, welcome to the crappy sandwich, which end do you want to take a bite out of?
You know, I don't like lawsuits either, and we've done a great job over the years of not having them. At least the lawsuits you got insurance. This don't have no insurance today, this comes from the insurance policy of the taxpayers.
Yeah, I think this is your insurance policy. This, this is where you, you pay now or you pay later, right? And, and unfortunately, that, that price just went up. I don't like it, I don't advocate for it, that's why I didn't want to speak to it. I wanted the company president and CEO to speak to it, that's why we brought him up. It's not one of those things I'm advocating for, it's one of those things that I just, I, I have to have a decision. You tell me which way I'm going, because again, with Nate and I going down to State Winter School today, we're going to have the opportunity tomorrow to talk to some of those vendors and to see where they're at too. So if you tell us to move forward with RFP, both with the consulting side as well as with those companies that are out there, we're going to start dipping our toe in that water too. But we need to know because our, our window is closing and we cannot afford to go without medical and mental health coverage. We're still the largest mental health provider in this, in the county as well.
Yeah, I think somewhere down the line, we're going to have to start thinking outside the box, Tony, because this can't continue. When you have one player in the business, they're a monopoly, and we keep paying and paying. So somewhere down the line, we're going to have to start thinking out of the box and see if there's another way we can approach this healthcare. Hindsight now, I'm not so sure we weren't better off not going with the 24/7 because that was a substantial increase, and here we are today. But anyway, I, it's disappointing, but I don't criticize the Sheriff's Department on this.
No, and, and I think just to reiterate your point, whether it's an engineer's office or whatever, we're finding out vehicles and equipment and all the things that we're doing are costing more money. These services are too, and to your credit, you're doing as, as the best job you can. And I think, Tom, where, where we probably differ a little bit in opinion is just that if, if this was something we're doing with our personal finances, we can delay purchases, whether it's vehicles or equipment, and say, okay, let's, let's roll the dice and see what happens next year. Maybe prices go down, maybe they don't. But that's, we have services to provide to our citizens, to our residents, and can't afford sometimes to let that lapse or to not do our responsibility to them to provide these services. So it does put us in a very difficult situation, and unfortunately, that's the job we have to do then too. So, yeah, not an easy one.
But in regards to the trucks, Lynda, honestly, it wouldn't, it's not an emergency. If they weren't placed or replaced, this county's not going to shut down when you have 25, 27 pickup trucks. So, you know, I guess you could say that is emergency, it's not. An emergency is when you don't have any vehicles on the road. We won't shut down because we don't have two pickups.
No, I agree, but we don't want to get to that emergency status, I guess, if we don't have to. That's kind of the job we're here to provide, to make sure we don't have those issues and those concerns. So as much as I hate having, doing something like this mid-contract too, it's not something we typically do, as we know, we go through budget for a reason. Yeah, we're presented with a very difficult situation going forward, so I appreciate that. But I want to be very clear with your recommendation, because I know we're not scheduled to take any action today anyways, not on for that, so it's still up for, probably next week, we need to move on this. But that's the 28% increase that you're saying would probably takes us from the 1.3 million to about 1.45, just estimating, I guess, what that is.
Be more than that.
That's just to finish the contract year out. You're going to have that on top of the new price and probably another increase.
Well, that's where we're at right now, I'm just kind of reiterating where we're at right now. And the June 25th, or June of 25, you said, is when the contract really approximately expires, so.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying yearly, he has increases, Lynda.
Yeah, I know.
So that means this year comes up, which I'm assuming is July 1st of next year, you're going to pay another increase on top of the increase on the top right now. So you're up to about 1.7 million.
Well, that's what I'm asking kind of for confirmation of what this all means. So not that we can't ask you after today's meeting too, so.
Yeah.
Not to put you on the spot.
Well, he's got, yeah, he, he sent you all the same letter that I've got. And he's got it broken down on a five-year pricing plan, so you can go take a look at that.
All right, nothing changes from that, so that was right. And that's your recommendation really to accept this.
I think that's the, the least expensive option for the county at this point.
And while we can't have a crystal ball to look at what we do in the future, RFP might be something we want to consider going forward. It still could be a more expensive option at, or at that time, but all right, but that is your recommendation.
That's my recommendation today.
Any other discussion?
I'll, I'll just add, I'll, I would support approving this amendment next week, but I, on Tom's point of, of thinking outside the, the box, I was wondering, Tony, do you know of other jails, maybe of our size or similar, maybe larger ones that completely in-house these services? So it's, it's not contracted out?
They, there are. Lynn County still does contracting with county health. And, and before Nafisa left, we had some conversations about that. The trial, the challenge is it's a recalibration, right? Our county health is not set up for those kinds of services and, and hasn't been for a long, long time. When we first built this new facility, we still had county health, but very quickly moved away from that due to the substantial size increase in the number of beds and the number of inmates that we were servicing. But there are options, there are outside of the box options, and, and we've had some conversations with local providers and, and there's been some just rumblings and, and some opportunities for conversations, but none of that happens by Mar, by May. So again, I, I think there's, there's interesting opportunity. My fear or my concern obviously would be I can't recommend something that diminishes service or, or creates more liability for the county. So we would want to proceed very cautiously with any of those conversations. But we're all in, in, in being creative and, and working with local providers and, and maybe exploring contracting with, say, a people's clinic or, you know, you know, some, some local folks that have, that have popped up and said, hey, this might be something that we'd be interested in working with you on. There's probably some opportunity there to create kind of a hybrid approach and homogenizing services to try and make that work. I, I think there's opportunity there, but not by May.
And if we reduce the number, just saying, if we do reduce the number of inmates, the contract is lower. I'm just thinking, we talk about the transitional housing, you know, of helping people with mental illness and getting them in different facilities, and if that were ever to be a possibility.
So.
Consider.
I approached the board with an ARPA fund recommendation to expand the bed space of the jail. That wasn't because we needed bed space at the time. That's because we're trying to forecast against future needs. You're never going to have a situation where you don't need beds. Now, between Swift Fair Certain, between specialty courts, between community-based placement options, between alternative programming, between our partnerships with community-based corrections, treatment programming, being very aggressive with adult crisis stabilization, access centers, detox centers, and, and all of the other things that we try and do as a pre-arrest deterrence from placement in the jail. All of that stuff, probably Blackhawk County is better positioned than most to take advantage of, of situations where they're not being placed in jail on, on simple misdemeanor charges. And frankly, right now, we don't hold. Nate, do you even have a misdemeanor offender working as a trustee? So we, we can't even find trustees. We used to have a, a work crew program where they would go out and they would remove debris from the roads and, and mow our yards and, and, you know, do stuff in county parks. And we don't have time servers. Everybody's sitting in the jail right now, he can't find laundry workers and floor trustees to do cleanup inside the jail, to do laundry inside the jail. They're all pre-sentenced detainees. So the courts are even triaging down to the point where we're not having people sentenced to serve time in the Blackhawk County jail. So everybody sitting in that jail, 260 average right now, average daily population, and every single one of them are pre-sentenced detainees, and most of them are unforcible felonies, meaning they're going to prison, they're not going to be sentenced to serve time in the jail. So that's just the nature of criminality right now in Blackhawk County. That will probably ebb and flow, that will probably change over time. But right now, what we are talking about and what we tried to encourage the board to entertain with that expansion project in the jail was to give us options for juvenile placement, for things that still cost the county taxpayer money that we could keep in-house. It was the flexibility.
Tony, we're drifting off the agenda. NAF Care, healthcare is what we've supposed to be talking about.
And, 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 and the bed space just doesn't exist, it's a finite resource. And, and your, your finite resource is going to continue to winnow away. And so what we're trying to stave off is that day that somebody has to come to you and say, we need to build another facility. Not, are you going to reduce the number of beds to where you can have a cheaper healthcare product?
No.
That's probably a pie in the sky that'll never occur.
No, that's why I thought the solutions are, are difficult.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Got to be a better answer. Somewhere down the road with what, what we're doing with the mental health people, they're getting great services, but they're, like you said, there's not enough people in the field to help them progress. So what do they do, end up over there where they don't belong?
And we're having great impact. You know, your social workers within the jail, we're having great impact. We're just not stemming the flow of severe offenders.
You say you're going to send them to prison, the prison's full, so what do you do there?
And the turnarounds are fast in prison now, so.
All right.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Moving on to discussion, possible board action of the Sheriff's 6040 Fund proposal. Who brought that? Here comes Nate.
Back.
You're back.
Yeah, so at the discussion last week, the board had asked if Michelle and I could get together and come up with some numbers that we talked about. So I met with Michelle after the meeting last week, and we did that. We stayed mostly with that $1,000 mark that we talked about, a couple, you'll see we did bump up to $5,000. And that's largely because, Lynda, last weekend you'd asked me what kind of repairs we do. Some of the bigger items didn't jump out at me, things like we've got a geothermal system, we've got a septic system, we've got some of those bigger items that if we have to do a service call or especially any kind of emergency call on, $1,000 is just not probably going to cut it. So that's kind of the main reason those were bumped up on those things. Otherwise, everything's pretty much as you see it from what we discussed about last week.
And all those items, I think we've talked about this before too, as far as routine expenses in the contracts, they're all budgeted items, so it's like typically there'd have to be some increase, like a mid-contract or something like that that would change it, so, no, that's great, thank you. So are you going to review the items requiring pre-approval from the board as well?
Um, yeah, I didn't know, but I think everyone has it in front of them. I didn't know if you wanted me to read through it, but, so if we go through items not needing prior approval from the Board of Supervisors, routine operating expenses for the range such as utilities to include electric, water, sewer, internet, trash collection, pest control, we'll continue to buy things such as the water softener pellets, minor equipment purchases defined as those under $1,000, general maintenance supplies, again, under $1,000, minor repairs to facilities such as those things I just discussed a few minutes ago, under $5,000, target supplies such as for the target backers, the, that kind of stuff there, the paper targets, and just the miscellaneous office supplies. And then we'll continue with contracts currently being paid out of the 40% funds such as our pace time sheet, the bench analytics, the Zoom meetings account, our Life Scan and our DOC, which would be Sarah Geiger's position. And then for items that we would come to the board for pre-approval with, prior to expenditure, would be a tactical or training needs in excess of $1,000. Any major improvement to the range, which would be a improvement or a new building, anything like that, that would exceed $5,000. And any new contracts or maintenance agreements that we were going to possibly put under that item, so. And then obviously, any other items not included in the categories about where we'd come for pre-approval as well. And then if that's all approved, then I'll run back across the street and get everybody back to the collecting right away on that.
Because we've disrupted, obviously, the collection process somewhat, but.
Yeah, Rick said, we're still, with kind of the ebb and flow of it, we're still pretty well been sitting right where we normally would, but especially as fewer and fewer things go to collection over the next couple of months, we would definitely start to see that decline, so.
You know, we're talking about fees and stuff, when's the last time we raised the fees on the people that used the facility out there, the range?
That I would have to defer to the sheriff on.
Oh, boy.
Haven't paid the utility bill.
That don't look good.
You guys been paying this bill?
Yeah, that's what I wondered. We need your money.
Same as we ring, raise fees on the range up there. So they have not been raised.
So we don't do that, or that we just?
We haven't, we, I charge any other agency that wants to use it $500 for the year.
Yeah.
And there's, I think upwards of 12 or 15 areas, agencies that use it. We don't do that, we're not trying to make money off them, we're not trying to bilk them out of money, we're just trying to help them offset the costs from the range that, that we use.
So what's the pleasure here? You going to take that? Anybody want to take action on this item today? Whatever you speak at, want it. Are you guys still there?
We're still here.
Okay.
Yes, I'm here.
We got blinking lights here, so wondered if we lost contact or something.
What's the pleasure of the board? What are your thoughts, Dan? I don't know if you can hear us, can you hear us?
I can hear you, I was just looking at the agenda again. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Any further questions? Hearing none, this resolution, please answer your name and is called.
Felka?
Yes.
Excuse me, Leyland?
Yes.
Little? Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Resolution adopted. Next, discussion possible board action, consideration for establishing a committee to assist Gallagher Consulting in the classification and compensation study. Proposed members are Mike Hendrickson, Conservation, Grant Veder, Auditor, Michelle Wiedner, Finance Director, Cherie Galmeyer, HR Specialist, Anna Knapp, HR Specialist, Amanda Fessenmeyer, HR Director, and two from the Board of Supervisors.
I would like to be on this committee.
I think, I, yeah, I was going to say, I'm certainly willing to serve, too. I, I know Mr. Little had indicated an interest as well, but I don't see him online, so I guess.
I'll, I'll offer a motion to approve with Supervisor Leyland and Supervisor Chalka as the board representatives.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just, yeah.
Thank you. So this was just recommended by Gallagher Consulting. The purpose of this committee is really to help establish the timelines, hit certain milestones, as we do have a, you know, a four-to-six-month period, four months on the short end to try and get this accomplished. And the time requirements, we're looking at probably two times a month initially. There is going to be a meeting next week. I'd like it to be following the Board of Supervisors meeting. It'll be a virtual one with the consultants. I know there's the ARPA meeting typically after each board meeting, but I do want to ask that we can use that time for the two board members and the rest of the staff that are typically here for the board meetings. That should be about 45 minutes long. And then following that initial meeting, we'll be expected to meet at least two to, one to two times a month. The other thing I wanted to provide it was just that the consultants do plan to come here in person to meet with the board before rolling out any of the questionnaires, and where the employees will all be completing those. So they would like to come July, or, I'm sorry, January 24th. And so we tentatively put that out during the board meeting for them to come and present and to hit the highlights of what this study will include. So I appreciate the support on this and looking forward to having this committee assist us to move this study along. And I have any questions at all?
Thank you, Amanda. Any questions? I guess, Chris, you got a question?
No questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, correct?
Uh, yes.
This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little? Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is an 905 hearing on the proposed ordinance number 77-273, the Boswell rezone, issue of motion to receive and place on file, proof publication, public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion to waive the first reading as notice was published on December 2nd, 2022, in Waterloo, Korea.
So moved.
So moved.
Moving seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, the motion to close the hearing after all written comments are received and placed on file.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded, you got the floor, buddy.
Okay, yeah, the Planning and Zoning Commission at the regular meeting on November 15th, 2022, reviewed the request by Dr. Brad Boswell to rezone 6.0 acres from, to, in order to, from A Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District in order to construct three new single-family homes, which is approximately 1,250 feet north of the Ford Road and West Mount Vernon Road intersection. It was moved by Bojor and seconded by AG to deny the request by Dr. Brad Boswell to rezone six-point acres from Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District. The one parcel containing the 6.0 acres for the proposed rezoned area has been zoned A Agricultural District since the adoption of zoning orders in 1982. Surround area consists of agricultural lands with some rural homes in the zone to Agricultural District to North and South. Land in the east is zoned to Agricultural District, AR Agricultural Residential District, and Residential Suburban District. Land in the west is zoned to Agricultural District and AL Agricultural Limited District. Rezoned areas designated as agricultural on the future land use map. None of the rezoned areas located in a special flood hazard area. The site land evaluation score of 63 and lease a score of 225, indicating moderate agricultural value. The applicant wishes to rezone 6.0 acres from ADAR in order to construct three new single-family homes. Should be noted that there were three rezoned requests that were approved in the last five years along Waverly, Waverly Road, north of West Mount Vernon Road. In addition, these properties are only located about 3,300 feet to the east of the three proposed rezoned areas. Technical review committee questioned if there was adequate space to serve three septic systems. Ryan Brennan with Blackhawk County Engineering Office noted they will coordinate with the applicant in order to determine proper locations for the driveways. And that's the staff report.
Thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like Dr. Boswell's online.
Doc, would you like to say anything?
Sure, I'd love to speak. You guys appreciate your time. Mine seems pretty pedestrian compared to all the things you deal with, apparently, on a day-to-day basis. I had two boys that went to you and I. I bought a farm north of town. My intent was to build a home there and eventually moved there. We've really enjoyed the area. I had a man, or a gentleman, Brad Stumbo, came to your meeting. I was unable to attend the Board of Supervisors, and I didn't really understand the why, the what-for, why I was not being allowed to do that. I talked to Pella Planning and Zoning and just tried to get a better feel on why not. We felt like it would work, and it's not my decision, but I would like to put those in. I was going to do one, I thought, well, if I'm going to do one, I'd like to have neighbors. So that was my reasoning. The piece of property that we used was a real sandy spot along the road that has very little agricultural use. It was 40 CSR and a very poor piece of ground, just the way the glacier works and how it deposits things. But there's some really good dirt on that ground. It just doesn't happen to be where I asked for the rezon. So that is my speech for the day.
Thank you, sir.
Currently, though, the land is farmed, correct?
Uh, correct.
Yeah, even poor quality, but. I assume that might have been the reason that it was unanimously denied.
Yeah, well, you know, there's been such turnover with my group, and we haven't had a request to, you know, usually they've approved two or one property, but we just haven't had a request in years. In regards to rezoning for three, we have approved a couple along Waverly Road, which, as stated in the staff reports, just, you know, 330 miles, basically to the east. So, yeah, so they, they, I think, yeah, they just weren't, you know, they've never approved a request for three. My current, my current members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, so, you know, that's, that's kind of why they, that's why they didn't approve it. I guess they just didn't feel comfortable with it, because they haven't, that, that group hasn't approved a request like this in the past.
Right, so if he was to take it back, there's a chance they might approve it if he was just to present it as one parcel.
One or two, yeah, they, they may, I, you know, it's, it's kind of hard for me to, you know, judge how they'll vote. You know, I always tell folks, you know, applicants, that, you know, I, you know, they approve some, they don't approve others. Main reasons, you know, prime farm land, this line isn't prime farm land, it's just medium value. So, you know, and, and I guess other, you know, rezoned requests have been approved off Waverly Road, so, yep.
Typically, though, the board supports.
One or two.
The P and Z, too, I was going to say.
Yeah, oh, yeah, sure.
Their decision, and so unless something's changed, or there's something that's brought forward that's different.
And I don't want to interrupt, but I wasn't understanding that they wouldn't approve three. I could certainly cut it back to two and, and re, and ask the same question again, if I could get two approved. I, I didn't realize that one or two was different than three.
Is that, how would you handle that, Seth? Is that something like, if, would you, I guess, reach out to them as a P and Z group?
I mean, we'd have to.
If they reconsider if it was less or not, so that you don't?
I mean, we, I, we could, you know, potentially bring it back, but.
That's a change. It can bring back the same, yeah.
We, you know, we could, you know, see if they would support one or two. I guess that's an option.
Well, unfortunately, it helps when they make the decision.
Yeah, but I guess.
Say more.
Yeah, but if you guys make a decision today, doesn't that preclude him from applying for six months?
That, yeah, it does, but that's what I mean, it would have to come back with a change. Otherwise, it just gets right down.
Yeah, we could, you know, we could, like, request to table it and bring it back for one or two, see how they feel about it. And, you know, Mr. Dr. Boswell wasn't able to attend that meeting, he was busy. So maybe if he's kind of there explaining, you know, more of, of, you know, why, why, why do you support the rezoned request? Perfectly, uh, yeah, we can, we can definitely take it back for maybe just one or two properties.
Are you hearing all this, Doc?
I certainly am and appreciate your time. And like I said, my understanding was very poor. I didn't realize that three was an issue. I could certainly ask for two and see if that would work.
And it may not. They may have reasons that they choose not to do it, but maybe they could make those aware. Are you aware of those, I guess?
Yes, it would make me aware, that would be much appreciated. I have zero understanding of the why or why they were turned down.
Yeah, well, originally, they were, I was talking to Cody Skinner, who's a, I think, a landman that, that knows Dr. Boswell. And he, they were looking at doing nine. And I was like, whoa, nine? No, because I think Dollstrom tried to do that off of One Slow Road a few years back, and it got unanimously denied. So I basically, well, let's try out with three. And like I said before, it's hard to, it's hard to know how my, my, my folks will gauge it. Like, you know, they, they may, you know, turn around and recommend denial for two.
Oh, I would agree. It's, since it's being farmed, I think there's a strong, yeah, element of that, that they'd say that, so, yeah.
Yep.
You know, there's, I don't want to interrupt, but there's ground on the west side, south and west of, of the dome, that's, prime farm ground is being farmed, and I see it being tore up and used for industrial purposes. And this is extremely poor sandy ground along this road.
So.
That's something you might want to bring up when you bring it back.
Yeah, but I mean, that, that lands in Cedar Falls city limits, and, and they don't have air preservation within their ordinance.
I understand, I understand.
So if we table it today or ask you to do that, at least, like I said, because otherwise, if we take the action and deny it, it's worth to deny.
Yeah, we can, we could definitely table it, and then I could definitely bring it back with two, and we can just make some changes to the plat map and.
Is that your suggestion, Supervisor?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second a motion to table.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, there's, there's a motion on the floor right now to close the hearing, which you should dispose of before.
Thank you.
Any other action.
Mister Auditor.
And I don't note that you need to take action to table.
Okay.
Because if there is a motion to approve, then there is not a motion to table.
Oh, okay.
Same action, good, okay.
So a motion to close the hearing.
And I assume there was no written, you probably, comments either.
I didn't see any written, no.
Yeah.
But we do have a motion to close the hearing.
Yep. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Any reports or information from the board?
Thanks. Wouldn't we always use this time, I guess, to offer condolences? I'd certainly like to do that to the family of Betty Wobena.
Yeah, also Jane Hartley from the Recorder's Office, one, one heck of a nice and great young lady that worked well with everyone here. And Betty will be missed, like the KWWL said, she's involved in a lot of stuff. And that'll be a big pair of shoes to try to fill.
Sure, she was probably, yeah, a great ambassador for the area, you're right, for certain. I, and, and one item, I was just going to ask the board, I think it came up before about the meeting, or maybe it was the email that we sent on the, on because of the holiday, if we were going to meet on the Wednesday, or.
That's what I thought we were meeting.
We are going to do then, okay. I just wondered if people were going to be able to participate. So we will meet on the.
Yeah, no, no problem with that Wednesday.
Super, okay.
Anything else to come before us? Any taken motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Oh.
Hi, my name's Nathan Cedar Falls, Iowa, Blackhawk EMS Association President. I'm just taking a quick moment to invite you guys. We have a public session here on January 12th at 5:30 in Gilbertville. I can email you guys the information as well. Last quarter, we had an EMS system standard self-assessment we had to perform for the state to receive state grants for education. And part of that deal is when we did the self-assessment, we also have the public hearing, the public comments on action plans moving forward, so. Other than if any questions at all, I'll be back here after the meeting to answer those, so.
Send the email, we'll come up with questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, do I?
Yes.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.